Call the meeting of the City Council to order for Monday evening, December 28th, 2015. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, councilors, good evening, guests. Merry belated Christmas and a happy, healthy New Year to all of you. And appreciate everybody being here. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we start tonight, it's a heavy heart, I'd like to ask for a moment of personal privilege. We lost a former Ward 1 city councillor and a former colleague of many people here, particularly Counselor Denapoli. I know Counselor Cassidy is here. Peter Marciano was a true Brocktonian, a real, of course, representative family that led us into being called the City of Champions, the Marciano Family. And when you met Peter and spent some time with him, you remembered it. All of us that knew him, when you walked away, you knew you had seen somebody with a smile on his face and a big heart. And fought a very tough fight for the last many years. And again, a true Brocktonian, a true champion. And he may never have been the biggest guy in the football field, but he was always the toughest guy in the football field. And we're going to miss him. The city will miss him, this council will miss him. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence on his behalf.
I also want to take a moment just to introduce our new councilors that are in the audience this evening. Counselor Lodge Winterfau is in the audience this evening. Also, the new councillor from Ward 6 coming in. Mr. Lally is also here, and Ms. Borghardt, councillor of Ward 5. We appreciate them for being here this evening with us. And Counselor Sullivan?
Can I read it first?
Yeah, yeah, we need to read it first. I'm sorry. My fault. We can begin. Sorry, I'm stumbling a little bit. I got a little bit of a cold. Sorry about that.
The appointment of John R. Olson at 10:15 North Main Street is a constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years. Reappointment of Catherine A. Schaff, Bridgewater, is a constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 Mr. President.
Counselor Sullivan.
Motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor? Opposed? Fails. Mr. President.
I'm not doing so good for the last night, am I? Sergeant McGoldy's here, if he could be recognized.
Counselor Sullivan.
I'm going to make a motion, take agenda item 2 and 3 collectively. We're going to act on those suspension, undispension rules and act on those tonight.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, that we're going to act on items 2 and 3 collectively. Suspend the rules and act on them this evening. All in favor of that? Opposed? Mr. Clerk, please read the appointments.
Reappointment of John R. Olson at 10:15 North Main Street is a constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years. Reappointment of Catherine M. ACF, Bridgewater, is a constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 The appointments have been confirmed. Counselor Sullivan.
Motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Counselor Stedinsky, you want to do the late file on the?
Yes.
Do it now.
If I'm, Mr. President, I'd move for a late file at this time.
Second.
In hopes that we can hear it tonight.
Motion's been made, and second, to accept the late file, and we're also going to suspend the rules and act on it this evening. Mr. Clerk?
Okay. We have the appointment of Johnny R. Barnes for the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Appointment of Robert J. Orchet for the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Joseph Thompson for the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Ryan E. Costa for the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Christopher Anderson for the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Zachary Davis to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Frances Madden to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department.
Mr. President.
Jordan.
I move for it.
What we have more?
Five.
Jordan F. Dugay to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Christopher J. Capozoli to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Jonathan Cologne to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Brian E. McLean to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Ryan J. O'Keefe to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department.
The first one got there really well. And I'd like to move just under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of that? Opposed? Mr. Clerk, the question now is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 Names have been confirmed. Mr. President. Counselor Stedinsky.
I'd like to move this stuff, reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Gentlemen, ladies. Congratulations to all of you, and I'm sure you're doing an outstanding job. Good luck to you as you go through the process. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, then I can get on the right game. Counselors back in order. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Order of the Real Estate Committee for its meeting of December 21st, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order of the Finance Committee for its meeting of December 21st, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Executive Director of Fearing the Council with the amount to be appropriated for the retirement system for fiscal year 2017, which commences July 1, 2016 totaling $20,072,463.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Brockton Water Commission Chairman stating that at the December 14th, 2015 meeting, Brockton Water Commission reviewed the letter of intent dated August 6, 2014, on the sale of Aquaria Desalinization Plant. Water Commission voted on a motion to approve that the mayor, city council CFO, and the water commission to negotiate the sale and purchase agreement for the Aquaria Desalinization Plant.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending that the city council amend the order, which was first read in the city council at its meeting of December 14th, 2015, and is now on the agenda as item 8 for the Finance Committee of December 21, 2015, regarding the state's grant to renovate Keith Park. The amendment is necessary in order to comply with the state's request to fully met all sources of funding for the project. Both the state and city match at this time. The grant is for a total of $231,000, but the total project is for $330,000, with the balance of $90,000 made available by his decision for it to be provided over two years through the city's federal community development block grant funding.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order that the DPW Commission has authorized a grant, a five-foot-wide use easement over a portion of Pearl Street in Brockton, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, for the use by an abutting property shown as plot 91 on City of Brockton Accessus Map 7, 1280 Belmont Street, owned by Rock Metal LLC, 1063 North Main Street, Brockton. Philip C. Nazarelli Jr., manager and counsel to December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Real Estate. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption, by roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
Order that the restriction at plot 301 Main Street parcel ID 105-016 valued at $1,430 shall be a non-buildable lot. End counsel December 9, 2015. Refer to Committee on Real Estate. That report is favorable as amended.
Questions on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed? Amendment passes.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
Order that the restriction at plot 301 Main Street parcel ID 105-016 valued at $1,430 shall be a non-buildable lot. End counsel December 9, 2015. Refer to Committee on Real Estate. That report is favorable as amended.
Questions on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed? Amendment passes. Mr. Clerk?
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 An appropriation of $87,000 from the stabilization fund to the Board of Elections, personal services over time $70,000, personal services over time $2,000, ordinary maintenance purchase of services $15,000. An order to fund extra costs for financing elections on February 2nd, 2016, and March 1st, 2016. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $6,098.66 from the Mass Association of Health Boards Plymouth County Region 5 Emergency Coalition Grant Fund, the City of Brockton Board of Health Mass Medical Reserve Corps Grant Fund. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 Affirmative.
Order is adopted. An appropriation of $6,098.66 from the Mass Association of Health Boards Plymouth County Region 5 Emergency Coalition Grant Fund, the City of Brockton Board of Health Mass Medical Reserve Corps Grant Fund. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted. An appropriation of $48,000 from ambulance receipts to fire department capital. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 Order that the mayor be authorized to execute a development agreement between the City of Brockton and Ion de Ball LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, having a usual place of business at Silver Swift Park, Wolfwood, Connecticut, for electronic advertising board. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
Mr. President, move for reconsideration, hopes it doesn't prevail. Second.
Motion's made, and second, for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Order that the mayor of Brockton B. and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and two, that the mayor of Brockton B. and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant, to be administered by the Department of Planning and Economic Development, and three, that this resolution shall take effect upon passage. End counsel December 14th, 2015. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable as amended.
Questions on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed? The amendment passes. Mr. Clerk?
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 The order is adopted.
Mr. President, I motion for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Mr. President.
Counselor DeWatt.
May I have a moment of personal privilege?
Yes, you may.
So, as all of you in this chamber know, and many of you at home know, tonight is my last city council meeting. And my fellow exiting city councillors, councillor Jay Stewart and councillor Dennis Denapoli, who may have words themselves on their last meeting, have allowed ladies to go first, and I very much appreciate that. And I appreciate both of your hard service and work for the citizens of Brockton. So, I'm honored to be here, and I've served 10 years on the city council, really fighting for residents' rights. It's really been my privilege and honor to be a public servant, and I'm even more so honored to be the state representative for not only the Ward 6 area, but Ward 4, 5, 6, West Bridgewater, and East Bridgewater. So, I want to thank each and every member of this city council for serving with me and being wonderful colleagues and friends, and people to bounce ideas off of, and agree with, and not agree with, and make change, and stop bad projects, and make the city a better place, which is what my goal is. And in each and every one of your own ways, it's what your goal is, or you wouldn't be here, all the time, serving the city and really fighting for residents. So, I'm honored to have served with all of you, and I want to thank the city employees, because without the city employees, the city would really be in a real bad state. They do very hard work for very little pay, and to a person, I would say 99.9% are really solid, hardworking, golden people, as are the residents of Ward 6, who are rabble-rousers and care about Little League, and want single-family homes, and want a backyard where they can raise their kids, and where their kids don't suffer from asthma, and where they feel safe, and they don't get picked on in school, and that they have excellent education systems. So, really, Ward 6 is, as one of my colleagues on the council called it, is God's country, right? So, I feel that way. And so, thank you very much for allowing me to serve you and be all your colleagues. Thank you.
Counselors, just before we move forward, I'll give you some citations for our outgoing councilors. And the citations are based upon the fact that I, as council president, and with the city clerk, just felt that, over the years, that outgoing councilors didn't really receive any type of citation. And I felt that I wanted to start something a little different as an outgoing president as well. Hopefully, whoever the next outgoing president... ...as they depart, you know, the building. So, with that being said, and I apologize again for my voice this evening, I'm going to have our city clerk is going to read what one says, and they each say the same thing, and then I'm going to present them to the councilors when they come up. Mr. Clerk?
We have a citation for councillor Dennis Denapoli, councillor Michelle Dubois, and councillor Jay Stewart. City of Brockton official citation.
Counselor Stewart, we'll let councillor Stewart go first.
Mr. President, thank you. A moment of personal privilege.
Please rise, councillor, go right ahead.
You can... To your hearts content, keep talking. Well, I'll try to break my reputation of speaking too much. But I will say that it's a very personal moment for me, as you can imagine, starting my campaign for political office in 2004, when I was much younger. But hopefully, still as idealistic. It's been just an amazing journey for me, a journey with a lot of learning, getting to know myself better, hoping that I've made an impact on people's lives. I think in life, all of it is about becoming a better person. And I've certainly been able to enjoy becoming a better person, serving on this council and serving the City of Brockton. I think about this work and my colleagues, and though I can't point everyone out, I do want to mention a few of my colleagues who've had a real impact on my political career here on the city council. So, I think of my colleague councillor Brophy, who retired a couple of terms ago, but I learned from him about the love of the institution, and that that love for the institution is important for it to survive and thrive. I think about my colleague councillor Petty, who we rarely agreed on anything. But he was always so incredibly respectful and gracious, and never once did we, or did he, you know, act in any manner that was not professional or becoming of this body. So, I learned a great deal from my experiences with him. To my colleague councillor Monahan, who we came on here together, I believe, but we learned a lot together, and I've always had great admiration for your common sense and bringing a real, kind of, a real concrete perspective to the work. And so, have watched you, and I appreciate what you bring to the council. There are so many of us here that I have to jump over, some of us to, two more highlights, to Mr. Stedinsky. I sat next to you my first term, if you remember, and constantly leaned over to you because of your wisdom, and asked your advice on lots of things, and also to help me identify who in the heck was in the room at the time, because you've been around forever, right? So, you knew all the backstory of the people who came before us, who they were, who their children were, who their grandkids are, and so forth. So, but I think you helped to ground me on just the history of the place, and learned a lot from you from that first term, but also walking over wherever you happened to be to get your advice again. And of course, you're sort of fitting that you're sitting next to me at the end of my term here, where I can kind of wrap up those kind of conversations with you. And then to my colleague here to the left, who is so much more, she's much wiser than I ever imagined.
Don't let them fool you.
Right. But a really smart gentleman with just a lot of wit, and your respect for all of the work has been something that I've picked up over the years, and I appreciate that as well. Thank you. I can't leave without thanking my family for their sacrifices, for making this possible for me. And just the idea that we can serve is something that we can easily forget how monumental a gesture that is, that people will go and build confidence or place confidence in your representing their best interest. And I've always tried to sit back and remember that my role isn't to, I hate to use the word coward, but to follow the inertia of the machine, whatever that machine may look like, whether it's special interest groups or... But it's really to think about those individuals who go and place their trust in us, and their trust in me, and to make my decisions based on that trust. And I hope that I've served people well. I certainly believe that, you know, Brockton has made me a better person, and I hope that I've made Brockton a better city. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Counselor Denapoli.
Moment of personal privilege.
Yes, you may, councillor.
Thank you. On Monday, I'll hand the reins over to you to be the dean of the council.
Thank you, councillor.
But, you know, I try to get some ideas into my head what this is like, and I just came up with it just now. Everybody remembers their 16th birthday, 16 years, sweet 16. That's how many years I've served in this chamber and to the city. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve. And, you know, I want to thank my family for support, because without family support, you can't go anywhere. And when I first told my wife that I wanted to run for council back in the year 1999, she said, "You're crazy." But anyways, she gave me her love and the support, and 16 years later, it's time to say goodbye. It's bittersweet. And I want to thank all the voters of Ward 5 who supported me over the last 16 years. And, you know, it's not easy running campaigns, and it's not easy answering telephone calls. I got phone calls at 5 o'clock in the morning, and I got phone calls at midnight. And, you know, you have to answer all the phone calls. And my fellow councilors, who I've served through the years, you know, you guys and ladies have been my colleagues for the last four years, or two years for some, and four years and eight years. But, you know, when I was first elected, I was the new kid in the block, and the three new kids in the block, I call them like the Three Musketeers. There was Jerry Cassidy, who's sitting in the audience, and Peter Marciano, we had a moment of science far earlier, and myself. And, you know, we had councilors that were in this chamber for many, many years. Councillor Mike Brady, who's now a state senator, he was, I served with Michael, and I also served with the late Paul Stedinsky, and Peter Aziev, who were my mentors. And, you know, every time I saw Peter, he was the only one in the city that ever called me Denny. "Denny, how you doing?" You know, everybody calls me Denny as a councillor. But, you know, I'll always remember that, because, you know, they were special. And, you know, well, you know, it's time to move on, and I'm going to miss it, you know, it's, 16 years is a long time. But, you know, I'm looking forward to retirement, and I'll say goodbye, and God bless, and my fellow councilors, and to the new councilors that are taking over, do your homework, pay attention, and don't take it personal. Do not take this job personal. You have to move forward. And the other thing is, serve the mayor, you serve with the mayor, you're the boss over the mayor, because you set the presidents over the city of the finances, but without the mayor and without you, you can't move the city forward. And we want the city to move forward. There's a lot on the agenda next year that you, you know, ladies and gentlemen, are going to have to deal with. And I'll follow it in the paper. And good luck, good night, and Happy New Year to everybody.
See, when I came here, they didn't call me Denny. For whatever reason, they started to call me Dennis Denapoli, and I could never figure that out.
It did get us mixed up a long time.
I don't know how, the hairline was different, but in any case...
We're both good-looking, though.
There you go. But in any case, I do want to just take a moment to mention, and I'll start with councillor Denapoli, because I've known councillor Denapoli and his wife Sue for a good, good many years, and I knew him when he wasn't in the political process, and your wife was very active, and you were too, at the Asheville School as a parent advisory council member when I was on the school committee. So, I have so many, many years with councillor Denapoli, and even had the great opportunity to serve him under him as the school committee member, and he was the city councillor. And Dennis always, always, as the others did as well, always acted in the best interest acted in the best interest of the people that elect you, and, and he, he always did that. Michelle did the same thing, and Jace, you did the same thing, and I think you should be proud of yourself for coming to the council as, as probably, and I'm not trying to be rude in saying it, but as more or less as our first minority to be here on the city council, and, and I think people looked at that and were very proud to have you here. So I just want to take time to wish you all the very, very best, and I hope that you'll come back and visit with us. If not, you can turn on channel twelve and you can watch us, you know, a little different, but in any case, I, I do want to take, take that moment to say thank you on behalf of the City of Brockton, on behalf of the city council. We appreciate all that you did for your people. We also have with us this evening, state delegation have some citations, our state senator, Michael Brady, our state representative, Colin Cronin, is here as well, if they want to come up, I don't know how they...
Susan.
Want to divvy up what they, what they have, but they have some citations. And I also wanted to make mention too, former city councilman from Ward Three, Jerry Cassidy is here in the audience, and appreciate him being here as well this evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know you're, you're never far from word, so...
I, I learned very early in life that to be a gentleman, ladies go first, so ladies before gentlemen, so I'm going to let my good friend and colleague and a, and a great advocate on behalf of our district representative, Claire Cronin, is going to read the citations.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
The first citation is for State Representative and City Councilor Michelle Dubois.
Yeah, right, Michelle.
Thank you. And we've announced her as first, so she can join us with the others. So this is from the House of Representatives, and it says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Michelle Dubois in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the City of Brockton and for your service on the Brockton City Council. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors," and it is signed by our state senator, Michael Brady, myself, Claire Cronin, and Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo.
Thank you. So I, I love being part of the delegation as a state representative now, and I appreciate this, and I realize that I made the biggest mistake of not thanking my family and my husband, Adam, for these last ten years on the city council, because without him and my mom, and my sisters, and my nieces, nephew, and everybody, I really couldn't do it. So, thank you.
And next we have Counselor Jay Stewart. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Jay Stewart in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the City of Brockton and for your service on the Brockton City Council. Once again, the entire membership extends its very good wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, and that is signed by state senator, Michael Brady, state representative, Michelle Dubois, myself, and Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo. Thank you.
So it's my honor as a state representative and as his colleague to read Dennis Denapoli's citation. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Dennis Denapoli in recognition to your, of your dedication and commitment to the City of Brockton and for your service in the Brockton City Council. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, and it's signed today by myself, Representative Claire Cronin, State Senator, Michael Brady, Robert DeLeo, and I've been so honored to serve with you. Thank you.
Now, what can I say? We, we, we thank you, and I, I, the only citation I ever received before was from the police department. This is really... Thank you very much.
Counselor. And I wish all the councils moving on the best of luck. We have one for you, Mr. President, if you wouldn't mind joining us.
Really?
Serving as our president of the Brockton City Council, which I had the privilege and honor to serve at one point, and I know you're going to be electing a new president this, tonight, but this is for your dedication, for your leadership and dedication as president of the city council, and it's signed by the whole state delegation. Thank you for your service. And thank you to all the city councils serving our city, because without all of you here, our city wouldn't be the City of Champions as well, and I wish everybody out there a happy and healthy New Year. God bless.
Thank you, counselors, and thank you, our state senator and our state representatives for being a part of this process this evening as well. And just before we do depart, because we're going to be going into caucus and election of a president just in a few minutes, just remind everybody that next Monday, January fourth, is inauguration day. I'm sure you've been with the city clerk the last few days, and you've got everything organized the way that he wanted it done in regards to the meal and everything, so just, just make sure that you're here next Monday by at least nine-thirty in the morning, because everything begins at ten o'clock AM sharp, so it'll be right here in the chamber, so that's just a reminder for next week. Any other counselors have anything to, anything else, Counselor Sullivan?
President, if I could, I, on behalf of my colleagues on the council, I want to thank you, Dennis, for your leadership, your professionalism, and your, really, your tried and true dedication to the city, a champion city of Brockton, and your residence of Ward Three, but in your capacity as council president, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for those nice, kind words, and thank you, counselors, for, for standing, I appreciate it, and it's been a great, it's been a great run, it's been a great year, it's been a fast year when you think about it, it, it really did go fast, and, and I think we all worked well together. I think of your, your support, I look forward, as we move forward, there'll be a new president that'll be standing here next week, and I look forward to working with our new counselors, especially one of which, who I've known for a good, good many years, even when he was on the school committee with me, and he served as mayor, we served together. I think we got a great group, and we're going to have some difficult times, it's not going to be easy, but I think, I think we'll be able to get through it, so with that being said, I say thank you to that, I appreciate it very, very much. Again, we're going to be going into caucus, and we're not going to be coming back out. I would remind the new counselors, they come in to join us for the caucus, and at that point in time, we'll be nominating our new president. Any other business to come before? Yeah, and the outgoing counselors are welcome as well. Any other business to come before this council this evening? Shall I hit it hard or soft?